Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order for March 4th, 2020. Everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance in a moment. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the first thing on our agenda, and I want to apologize, is the microphones don't carry out to the audience tonight. There's a problem somewhere. We'll all try to speak loud enough so you can hear. First thing is the accept or modify the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
I'll say it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Community participation. Community participation is a time intended for the public to give an input on relevant school issues and not intended to be a question and answer period. As this may be the first time the board has heard this information, please do not expect individual responses or comments by the board at this time. But be assured that your concerns will be reviewed. Please print your name on the sheet at the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Have anybody like to speak? Seeing none. Consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Reports. Mountain Vista Governor's School.
Good evening. Mountain Vista Governor's School is an academic governor's school for math, science, and technology. The school serves Clark, Culpeper, Falkir, Frederick, Rappahannock, Winchester, and Warren County. Students attend in the morning and attend classes at their home school in the afternoon. It's very helpful because you'll see from our students, some of them came straight from practice today, and they're dressed up. Recently, our students from our two middle schools attended one of their showcases and they came back and they are absolutely raving about the things and the projects they saw. And again, I hope that we'll hear a little bit about that tonight. Dr. Williamson, the director at Mountain Vista Governor's School, is here tonight with several of her students. I'd like to invite Dr. Williamson and her students up.
Thank you, Mr. Fox, and thank you, Dr. Pence, and Mrs. Shepherd, and Ms. Bauer, and all the board members for having us here tonight. We thought it would be a good opportunity to fill you in a little bit on what's happening with Governor's School, what's been happening in the last few years. Some of you have been around for a while and others may be new to Mountain Vista. And so, we just wanted to share with you some of the things that's happening at Mountain Vista with us today. We opened in 2006, so we've been open 14 years. Warren County was one of the seven school divisions that came together to establish a governor's school in the northern part of the state, northwestern part of the state. We're one of 19 governor's schools. Virginia is a unique state in how we do governor's schools. We have regional programs where at least three school divisions must come together to have a community of learners, high achieving students who have opportunities to get together, to learn, and to do projects, to do research, to have a different kind of program as an option for these students. We are in partnership with Lord Fairfax Community College. We have a site in Middletown and then a site over the Warrington campus where students learn. So that's been a productive relationship for us to have. You can read our mission statement if you like, but we really want to provide a different option, a different opportunity for high school students to come together with other high achieving students to be able to learn in a collaborative interdisciplinary environment with their teachers, with an opportunity to do authentic research, and to be able to get college credit while in high school and then just expand their opportunities to a wider community of learners. Our students are 10th, 11th, and 12th graders with aptitude and interest in science and mathematics. However, not all of our students are 100% hardcore math people. Some folks like humanities. We have a humanities strand, a research strand, and also several electives that we'll talk about in just a few minutes. Our enrollment for this year is 210 students, and it's been right around 210 students for the past four years since we added a 10th grade program. Originally, we're 11th and 12th grade program. You can see where our students have attended and are attending colleges. Approximately 75% through the years have gone to college in-state. UVA has consistently been the top choice for our students with Virginia Tech second. Though we have several teachers now that are tech alumni that were working real hard to recruit for tech, but still, UVA has stayed as our top choice with William &amp; Mary, JMU, VCU, and GMU as third place consistently through the years. About 25% of our students are out-of-state and you can see the prestigious colleges and universities that we have students attending and from which they've graduated also. Many more students than 25% are accepted at these schools. But you know, the expense of going out-of-state when you can get such a fine education in the state of Virginia makes that a better choice for many families. And frequently, students go to grad school at one of the out-of-state institutions after getting an undergraduate degree in Virginia. So we start school bright and early in the morning. Kids come at 7:30 and leave about 10 minutes till 11 to come back to their base schools. It makes a nice balance for their day. They come to Lord Fairfax, have two classes, two days a week, the other two days a week they have two different classes. Then we have flex days on Wednesdays. And it makes them able to stay connected, be able to participate in activities, in classes at their base school. At their base schools, they usually take their foreign language classes, music, PE, art, all the electives, that sort of thing with many of those core science, math classes, and English and government at Mountain Vista. You can see our students are well-rounded because they're low and came for practice. And so, they're still able to have those connections with Warren County High School and Skyline High School while still participating in governor's school. On Wednesdays, we have what we call flex days. And on flex days, we do a variety of different kinds of things. I'll let the students share a few things. Well, first of all, I want you guys to stand up and introduce yourselves and say, "These are all seniors. I invited seniors to come today." And say your name and which high school you go to.
Start, Chase Rolch, and I go to Warren County High School.
My name's Joey Kilgallen, and I go to Warren County and Skyline High School.
I'm Hudson Fordy, and I go to Skyline.
I'm Jenna Stanley, and I go to Skyline, but I went to Warren County last semester.
I'm Dylan Becker, and I go to Warren County High School.
I want you to share a little bit some of the things that we do on flex days.
Well, one of the things we do on flex days, they have about, how many electives is it?
Seven. Seven.
So they have about seven of these STEAM groups and they're all based around science and technology. It's like kind of a... It's more like, it's like a full day of electives instead of putting in like an elective class on the Mondays and Tuesdays that we usually have classes. The one that I'm in is robotics, and we build competition robots for completing activities that are set out by that organization each year. We usually go out to a tournament at least once through the year so we can get experience in it, but we always compete with the Warrington campus of Governor's School, who's made up of other schools, and we'll have an inter-campus tournament. And it helps a lot because there's engineering practice, there's coding practice. It's just, it's a lot of experience and it's really good to have.
Our flex days are, they're really convenient because they allow our students to have a lot of flexibility in their time on Wednesdays. So we go to our respective STEAM groups and we're allowed to spend time on whatever we need. If we need space, like a study hall. I'm in the arts STEAM group, but I don't think I've drawn or painted anything so far this year. I've just used it as a space to get a lot of homework done, a lot of studying, and discuss things with my teachers if I needed to.
I taught my STEAM group how to knit last week.
I want to say also, we have the club basically that I'm in for STEAM groups is Envirethon, and we have competitions. It's a competitive club. And basically, it's for the environment and it uses... We have six different topics. We have soil, aquatics, forestry, wildlife, and wait... No, five. There might be five. And then we have like an oral, no, special topic, five. And then we have oral presentation. But we have like a lot of these different things and we present a 20-minute presentation about... This year, we have, it's in Rappahannock County. Basically, we are figuring out how to make it sustainable with the water in the area. And we do that every year. And we use our Wednesdays to do research and figure out how to best make our oral presentation.
Another thing that I particularly enjoy about flex days is that sometimes we have seminars. We have a lot of teachers that have degrees in different things besides the subjects that they teach, so they're able to use that knowledge that they have to teach us different things. I know two weeks ago, I was in a seminar about credit cards with our calculus teacher.
With computer science teacher, he did a stock seminar, which was cool.
Right, so they're just, they're almost mini-classes to teach us things that we wouldn't really learn elsewhere.
I learned how to weed.
And sometimes we take field trips, like, because I'm like all in the biology stuff. So we've gone down to the Shenandoah River and we didn't actually do it, but they did electrofishing and then brought the fish to show us like what they do with it. And so, we get involved with the community.
So flex days does give us some flexibility because on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, we are packed with classes, you know? We have to get there early and then we leave on time to get back to the base school. So Wednesdays, we're able to have some interdisciplinary connections to extend the curriculum. And then to just do some things, somebody mentioned they were in the art group. Our calculus teacher's an artist. So she does this art club STEAM group. And because many students don't have a chance to take art at their base school, they're sacrificing classes like that to take academic classes, you know, AP classes and all. So it gives them an opportunity to do some things that both extends what they're doing, relieve stress in some cases, and gives us an opportunity to have some time to get some things done. We also go on, we do field trips. We do four major field trips a week. And then what did we do today?
As Mr. Fox had mentioned, today we had a showcase where we do projects for the classes that we choose to apply to grade to if we need it in that class, like economics for myself. But we put together projects with some of our other peers and then the middle schoolers from all the counties that attend, all seven of the counties that attend the Governor's School, come in in waves, really, hundreds of kids. We try to teach them something with our projects and our teachers, they can come around and grade how well we're teaching what we've learned from them.
And our theme today was?
Rock and roll.
School of rock. Yeah. So we had about 200 middle schoolers come today and expecting probably 150 tomorrow. So, yeah, it'll be fun. So our curriculum, we teach mathematics courses, humanities courses, science courses, and then electives. We added this elective options when we added 10th grade four years ago, which has really extended and expanded what we were able to offer our students. And you can see this chart as to what the classes are that they take. Our 10th graders all pretty much, unless they're accelerated in math or something unusual is going on, tech chemistry, math analysis, humanities 10, which counts as their English 10 credit, and research. That is our year to get everybody kind of on the same playing field. They're coming from a variety of different programs and schools. And we get a chance to provide support that's needed for 10th graders so far as study skills and stress management and time management, those sort of things. So that's our year that we kind of get everybody adjusted to Governor's School. And then after that 10th grade year, the students are able to choose if they want to do a physics pre-engineering strand, which is across the top, or a biology life science strand, which is across on the lower chart there. The physics students end up with three classes of calculus. We do Calc 1, kind of Calc 1 and 1/2. The 11th grade year and then their 12th grade year, they take the second part of Calc 2 or Calc BC, and then multivariate calculus. That's paired with the physics courses that are calculus-based physics. The first course is mechanics and the second is electricity and magnetism. So you need that calculus to be able to solve problems in physics. The biology students do university biology, equivalent of AP biology, their 11th grade year. And in their senior year, they do microbiology and ecology. Statistics and one course of calculus is paired with that biology course. Statistics supports biology and getting a biology major and that kind of thing really well and transfer super well. So that's the classes that go with that. You can see we have a humanities strand that goes throughout the three years. Our humanities class is an interesting kind of blend of English and social studies and philosophy with a little art and music thrown in there, whole lot of presentation skills and a lot of writing. Humanities 10 is more of a Western philosophy-based kind of class. Humanities 11 is non-Western philosophy, more world literature and non-Western thought. And then Humanities 12 is a US government class that combines a lot of foreign policy as well as political philosophy and underpinnings in the United States Constitution. So that's the humanities strand that goes through the three years. For electives, our 20th graders take Research 1. That's a research methodology class for the students to learn how to do their research project. This time of year, the 10th graders are narrowing down their topic, getting a research question. Pretty soon, they'll be presenting their research proposal to a board which will approve that proposal. Then they'll go collect their data. When they come back in the fall, they'll analyze that data and write up a project. So we're in the midst of science fair for those 11th graders now. Local fairs, then going to state. And we have one girl that's been selected at this point to go to the International Science Fair that's going to be in Anaheim, California in May. And then the Middletown students will go next Tuesday to the regional fair. And hopefully, we'll have another winner there. So we'll have two students that get to go to the International Science Fair. So that's a... And then Capstone Project is for seniors. And there's a lot of variety of how they can do that. I think Jenna's going to talk about that in just a few minutes. I should have a chance to talk. Our electives are psychology and economics. Economics meets the graduation requirement for economics and personal finance. And then we teach two levels of computer programming. So all of our juniors and seniors have a chance to take an elective each year. So of those four elective choices, they get to take two electives. Our classes are dual-enrolled. Students have an opportunity to earn somewhere over 60 hours of college credit through our dual enrollment program. And many now are graduating with an associate's degree or certificate of general education. I think we have all but about five or six students this year that's going to get an associate's degree. That's pretty amazing. That's combined, of course, with the dual enrollment classes that they get at their base high school. And generally, just have to take a one-credit PD class and a public speaking class to get that associate's degree when they graduate. 10 of our classes prepare students for AP assessments if they choose to take AP, and three of our classes are post-AP level. Lots of college credit available. So, as I said earlier, we've had 14, we're celebrating our 14th year. We've had 700 students finish the program, expanded to 10th grade in 2016 and added elective offerings. Our relationship with Lord Fairfax has been mutually beneficial, I believe. It's been beneficial for us. We're able to use their library facilities, their technology, be able to do our science classes in college labs. It's a huge asset in benefit to Lord Fairfax as they get to have our students as part of their student body. Excellent students that add a whole different dimension to the environment there. We have a foundation that has been very successful. We have shrimp fest coming up at Warren County High School just the end of the month, so please come. Usually, Warren County has great representation at that and has been so generous to host, to have a place for us to have our shrimp fest. But our foundation provides funding for those STEAM groups. Robotics is a really expensive organization to do. Envirethon has to go to training and pay to be in competitions and that sort of thing. The foundation has provided, we have two 14-passenger buses and two minivans that the foundation has bought and continues to pay for, which gives us an opportunity to get those students out in the community much more than when we didn't have our own transportation, as well as helping to pay for charter buses and other expenses that we have so that we can do a lot of those extra things. As I said earlier, we have an international science fair winner this year so far, and maybe we'll have some more. Last year, we had a student place third in that international science fair. It's the first student that we've had that was a winner at the international fair. Though we've had students for a number of years that went and got to participate. Our student application is available this year in Spanish for the first time. We're working to increase our diversity among our student population. And then we have a Spanish-language promotional video to try to reach out to Spanish-speaking families so they can understand more about what Mountain Vista Governor's School is and consider, you know, encouraging their children to apply. Thought I would show you the numbers for Mountain Vista and then for Warren County Public Schools. As I said, we're working to increase our underserved population rate both from minority status as well as students who come from economically disadvantaged families. You can see, you've got a few more girls this year. But Middletown's right even. There we go. And Warren County, because overall at Governor's School, we've got a few more girls. Anyway, and you can see the breakdown for 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. Warren County has 24 paid slots. That's guaranteed slots that you're paying for. And then in addition to that, we're able to provide some at-large slots, we call them, which are free to the school division, but we get state dollars for them. So that works out, that works out well. And also, that's how you have 30 students rather than 24. So you're getting six for free. What a good deal. So I want to give our students an opportunity to share something that has been meaningful to them about their Governor's School experience. So Chase, next one?
So I've always really liked the sciences. And so, I was growing up with like the GATE program, which is Gifted and Talented Education. And they were like, "Hey, Mountain Vista Governor's School." And I was like, "Okay." And so, I've gone there since sophomore year, we all have. And it has just increased my love for the sciences of biology. And also through Envirethon, I just, I love the environment more. And I've been able to actually be there and see the things that are happening in our environment. And it has led my decision to be able to go for marine science at Coastal Carolina University. And they also thankfully took so far 37 of my credits from Mountain Vista Governor's School at LOCC. So hopefully, maybe I might be a junior in college. So be a competitive freshman. Yeah, out of state, yeah. So it's in South Carolina.
So as I said earlier, my name's Joey Kilgallen. And I wanted to discuss how Mountain Vista Governor's School was able to help my family financially pay for me as a student, being able to pursue my associate's degree through high school. I know if I wasn't enrolled in Mountain Vista Governor's School, then I probably would have paid two or three times more than what I have paid to be able to pursue my associate's degree. When I was younger, I never really considered attending Governor's School. I was involved in the Gifted and Talented Education programs, Gifted and Talented programs, as Chase had mentioned. And they took us to the showcases. We were able to see what the Gov. School students were achieving at Lord Fairfax Community College, but I never actually considered that as something that I would do. So when they opened it up for sophomores, I was in eighth grade. So the next year, being able to apply as a freshman was something that I knew I was going to do. After I received an acceptance, I wasn't sure if I was going to attend. And then speaking with Dr. Williamson, at her presentations, when my parents saw how much money we'd be able to save in the long run, whether that was through getting the dual enrollment credits or being able to achieve a scholarship by actually being, you know, by achieving more by being at the Governor's School, which really helped me. I know that I wouldn't be able to have been accepted to the United States Naval Academy if I wasn't a Gov. School student. And so, I'll always be thankful for that.
It's a fourth of the price of LOCC classes, so...
My favorite part about Gov. School is probably just the community as a whole. All the teachers are super supportive. At this point, the humanities teacher, she's pretty much my life coach. She, I go to her at least once a week to talk about all my problems and she always has the best solution, mostly to go to bed earlier. It doesn't always happen, but it's the thought that counts. And then all the students, it's nice to be around a lot of like-minded students, whether or not like they agree with you on everything. But like, a lot of academically focused people or people who are just as driven as you, you can have a lot of interesting conversations at Gov. School. And like, I mean, all the people up here, I would only be friends with Jenna probably because we go to Skyline together. And I mean, just being able to be friends with all the people at Gov. School, there's a lot of interesting people there.
Yes.
And then, in a good way.
Some people, these relationships that they've had, they go to each other's weddings and stuff like that. Like, that's how good of a friendship they have with these people that they would have never even met because they go to a different school.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about the research projects and the halfstones because those have definitely been very important in my life. So 10th grade and 11th grade, you do a research project. Mine, I did it on the effectiveness of multitasking. And it's not necessarily the project that I did that helped me so much. It was like the presentation and just learning how to write a paper that's like a college-level paper before you're there. So I know that when I get to college and I have to write a research paper, I already know how to do it. I know how to cite my sources and I know how to present it. Because before Governor's School, I was terrible at public speaking. But now I feel more comfortable talking in front of an audience, which I owe that completely to Governor's School. And then our Capstone Project, some of you might see me around this summer because I interned at the school board office this summer. And that was really helpful for me because it showed me like more like what I want to do with a career. And I know like Hudson, he did knitting, which like he loves knitting. So he got to dedicate 80 hours just to doing what he loves to do, which I think is really cool. And Chase, you did fishing, right?
Fishing.
It's like you can pick whatever you want to do and really just focus your time into something that is like beneficial to you and your future, which I really do, and I enjoy.
So I guess Gov. School gave me a lot of opportunities and that I wouldn't have through the original base school. So like one thing, during 10th grade, they had pretty much these seminars that you had to go to on Wednesdays instead of your normal STEAM group. And they would, based on things like time management, stress relief, a lot of stuff that helped you to break into that college environment, that the base school is not doing as much as that. And then stuff like the computer science class, there's not really a Java programming or Python programming classes at the base schools. But then, it gave me this opportunity to actually do something I really wanted to do in school, but I was never given that opportunity to. And because of that, I want to pursue a degree in either computer science or cybersecurity through that.
Good. So Chase and Joey, you said what your plans are for next year? What are your plans next year?
I have no idea.
Is that what you did say?
Yeah.
I'm going to UVA to study public policy.
I'm going to hear back from JMU, but I've already been accepted to GMU.
I just wanted to touch on something that Dylan said. I think Mountain Vista Governor's School does such a great job at preparing us for college that a lot of the alumni, when they come back, they even, they speak about how being in college after having the Gov. School experience, whether it was for two years or three years, college seems a lot easier because you have those skills that you wouldn't have had otherwise if you weren't in the Governor's School program, which is, you know, the time management programs, learning how to do skills, like Jenna said, like writing college essays, annotating, different things like that.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Do I have anything? To Dr. Williamson?
Do I have anything to Dr. Williamson?
Which one of us is going to figure out this coronavirus?
It's a biology.
Yeah. You guys have fun.
Wash your hands.
Well, Dr. Williamson, thank you so much. Seniors, congratulations. Look forward to hearing where you land. We know where most are going. We're still waiting. You'll do well wherever you go. Thank you very much.
I just want to say, I'm so excited that you all have had this opportunity. The rigor of Governor's School is amazing, and it really does prepare you for college. And I know three of you, I don't know the other two, are in athletics. I went to just about every wrestling match this year. I followed you on track wrestling.
I am a varsity sophomore.
You're a sophomore.
Hudson's a cheerleader.
Okay. So you head out on top of your Governor's School and your regular school, and I know a couple of you work.
I also last year on dual sport. I had a sophomore year.
So you're doing an amazing job, and keep it up. Looking forward to seeing good things in the future, reading about to the paper. Thanks for coming today.
Thank you.
What is your name in the black shirt?
Uh, Hudson.
Hudson?
Yeah.
Okay, figure this one out. Sleep twice in the same day. Figure it out.
There you go. Thank you all so much.
Thank you all for your time.
All right. Moving on to the superintendent reports. Ms. Shepherd.
Thank you. The Skyline High School Forensics Team won the VHSL Region 3D Championship at William Monroe High School. They moved to the 3AD Super Regional Tournament on February the 14th or 15th. And then all of the Skyline Forensics Team qualified for the state competition. At the end of January, District 10 Skills USA Competitions were held at Triplet Tech. We had two students who placed in the carpentry category. Ethan Thomas from Skyline High School finished second, and Caleb Miller from Skyline High School finished place first, and will be continuing onto the state level competition in April. We have received notification from the National DECA organization that the two Warren County High School School-Based Enterprises, Student Managed Business, and Wildcats Corner and DECA Tailgaters have received DECA's Gold Certification Award. The student managers, Emily Johnson and Anisha Wiggington of Wildcats Corner, and Michaela Grant and Devin Modestin of DECA Tailgaters will automatically qualify to compete in the School-Based Enterprise Competition in April at the National DECA Conference in Nashville, Tennessee. We had 31 DECA students who competed in various competitions during the 75th Virginia DECA State Leadership Conference held in Virginia Beach. The DECA, Warren County High School DECA Chapter was recognized as one of the top 25 chapters in Virginia. They received two National DECA Awards for its membership campaign and community service uncle for leadership campaigns. 12 students will be attending the National DECA Conference, April 28 through May 2 in Nashville, Tennessee. I would like to congratulate Skyline High School Wrestling Team. They finished third at the Virginia High School League Class 3 State Championship. The Reality Fair was at Skyline High School on Thursday, February the 20th. The 11th grade students learned how to budget their money based on career choices they made. It was a great experience for our students and the adults who's helped with that event. And then our superintendent student advisory committee met today, and the topic was school breakfast and lunch. And it's always fun and very informative to hear from our students when we meet with them. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Or Mr. Rinaldi.
I don't have really anything to report.
Okay. Ms. Ballard.
Nothing really to report. I do say thank you for the spring schedule for all the different athletic events because I like to plug into as many of those as possible. I did notice today, as I was heading out of town to go on my field trip on fishing, they finally repaired the fence up at Skyline Middle School that had been broken. Two sections had been broken out for the past two or three years. So thank you for whoever got that taken care of. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wells.
Nothing more than to thank Mr. Fox. Most recently, when you bring us a, you know, a report, it's with students. And that's always the best thing in the world is to, is to hear from the front lines or from the source of what good things are going on. So thank you for that. That's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wells. Dr. Pence.
Yeah, I would like to second that. Thank you, Mr. Fox, for having the Mountain Vista Governor's School come here this evening and really show us what just a wide variety of educational opportunities we have in Warren County Public Schools. I think that's great.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Pence. On the way in, I was thinking of everybody's responsibility in the community is to our children. And then tonight, what does Mr. Fox bring? Our children. And it's not the first time we've had students in here, and it's great to see, just as you guys recognize, of where we are, where we're going, and how bright and intelligent they are. I mean, they're all seniors, all very well-spoken, but sometimes we have sixth graders in here that are very well-spoken also. So kudos for those who raise them through our school system or outside of our school system. That's a community, and that's what we have to have. And I greatly appreciate it. That's all I have. Moving on, action agenda. Award contract for AS Rhodes renovation network infrastructure. Mr. Grant.
Good evening. The construction at AS Rhodes Elementary School will require that the data closet to be moved from a different location to a new location, which will be where the new office is. And new cabling will be, need to be installed into the renovated areas. Additionally, the temporary, there will be temporary classrooms, and we'll need to wire those up as well. So this will require installation of cabling in the temporary classrooms, and then that cabling needs to be removed again after the construction is complete. So really, this is all in three phases. The first phase is to move the data closet, which has all the switches and all that, all the stuff to get your internet to the kids, and move that to the new location. And then put temporary wiring as a second phase. And then the third phase is to actually put in the permanent wiring. So, and wiring includes everything from phones, your Wi-Fi, your internet, just for your, your computers and those types of things. And then also, I'm forgetting one thing. Oh, intercoms, intercoms, yeah. So, so we are requesting that syntax communication be allowed to begin construction on the network infrastructure at AS Rhodes Elementary School. The cost of the project is $88,550. And the funding of the project will come from the construction funds, and the services and materials will be purchased through the town of Front Royal IT Contract. You guys have any questions?
I have one, Mr. Grant. It's all new equipment. All the switches and everything will be brand-new. Or are we...
No. We just, the switching is brand-new as of last year. So that was out of e-rank funds. This is all cabling.
Okay. It's all cable. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Grant? Do you have a motion?
I move that approval be given to allow syntax communication to begin construction of the network infrastructure at AS Rhodes Elementary School in the amount not to exceed $88,550.
Just a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Approval of Lord Fairfax Community College Northern Shenandoah Valley Adult Education Memorandum of Understanding. Ms. Fagan.
I can ask pardon for a minute. The DECA program that Ms. Shepherd was speaking of, five years ago had one member. So the fact that we have this many students going to the national in Nashville this year is amazing. The FFA last Friday competed down in Blacksburg. It was over 1,000 students competing in Black and Bridle, and we had students that placed in the top 100. Four years ago, we had no FFA. So the growth that is going on with these students in these organizations, whether they're student organizations, Governor's School, or any of the other arts programs in the career and technical in this county, is just phenomenal. And the staff at the schools cannot be congratulated enough on what their work has been to get these students up and moving.
Thank you for that update.
Thank you. You give me a mic and it just happens, you know? That's all I can say. I have the pleasure of serving as this county's representative on the Adult Education Board through the Lord Fairfax Program. And what you have before you is a copy of the Adult Education and Literacy Act Memo of Understanding. This is a grant sequencing that lasts for three years. The current memo of understanding expires on June 30 of 2020, with this new undertaking effect July 1 through June 30 of 2023. Last year in Warren County, this grant actually served 71 individuals that completed the program. That includes ESL students and GED students together. Those students are served at Blue Ridge Tech Center and at Samuel's Public Library here in Warren, with other opportunities for students to gain instruction at Lord Fairfax Community College in other area locations throughout this region. Each system, including Warren County, is to provide a local match of not less than 15% of the allocation for their jurisdiction. This amount is determined by the Virginia Department of Education and is determined by use of information from the US Census, looking at numbers of adults in Warren County that lack high school diplomas. The match from the school system currently is actually less than 15% because Lord Fairfax Adult Basic Ed Group does such a good job of using their resources that they do not have to charge us the 15%. It is the expectation that it will continue that way. Obviously, that is a nonprofit. So when they are making money, I won't say making money, but when they are not using the money that they, that comes to them, they're able to give us a smaller request than the 15%. Our program continues to be a high-performing program in terms of the annual VDOE risk rubric for adult education providers. This past year, our program exceeded the federal targets for student measurable skill gains, and the state as a whole did not meet those targets. So this group has exceeded what the goals are, and our adult learners are being successful here in Warren County. This program and the consortium approach has been going on for eight years with Lord Fairfax as the lead agent, and it meets our school district's requirement to serve adult students through the Virginia Department of Education funds. Warren County's request is for $9,510 and 80 cents each year for the next three years.
Have to they reach out to students or potential students, potential learners?
They do newspaper ads. They place banners above the street, above Royal Avenue here, particularly in Warren County. They do radio advertising and Facebook. So I know personally over at Blue Ridge Tech, we get quite a few calls. We average one to two calls a week from area people calling to ask about how to get their TV.
So do you know how many people we have, how many of our residents each year complete the program? I mean, I see the numbers for how many residents do not have their high school diplomas.
This past year was 71, Ms. Fagan.
That's really inexpensive if you look at 71 people for $9,500. That's like 130, a couple odd dollars per person. That's, I think, quite about the person. Maybe not.
They are.
The values of what they can do once they have that.
Exactly. For $133, so.
And just as a side note, since I've gone on the board, the other things that I'm seeing is Amy Judd, who is the director, and her personnel, they work not only with the counties to meet their needs, but they also are aligned, for instance, with Workforce Solutions and some of the other agencies in the area to actually introduce these students to job placements as well.
Anything else? Do I have a motion?
I move that the Lord Fairfax Community College Northern Shenandoah Valley Adult Education Memorandum of Understanding for the 2020-2023 grant period be approved as presented, and the interim superintendent authorized to sign the MOO.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Fagan. Acceptance of donation. Ms. Shepherd.
Thank you. Yesterday, Gordmans had their grand opening at the Royal Plaza Shopping Center, and our Skyline High School and Warren County High School drum line presented or performed at the grand opening. And Gordmans would like to give them $1,000, $500 apiece for equipment and band uniforms.
Very nice. Have a motion.
I move that the donation of $500 to the Skyline High School Band and $500 to the Warren County High School Band by Gordmans be accepted with gratitude.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Some VSB training coming up. The board's role in developing the budgets, May 7 in Charlottesville. Anybody interested? Let Mr. Valentine know. And next thing is a work session, and we'll move to the conference room. Thank you.